Okay, good evening. It's May 13th, 2024, and I'll call the Groton Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Our first order of business are the meeting minutes from April 15th, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Okay, second. Is there any discussion, additions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? All right, and so next we have our literacy update.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Piazza. He's really led the charge here with his curriculum and instruction hat.
Well, and I'm also-
One of his many hats.
I did invite Lisa Corcoran as well. She's joining us online just in case any questions come up, but I'll try to do the best-
Is she on the panel?
She should be. Yeah, I see her there.
Okay.
Yep. I'll try to provide an update just on where we are. As you recall, the Groton Curriculum Review Team, just to remind everybody, is made up of 30 teachers, or 30 people, teachers, admin, and literacy specialists from all the schools represented across the grade levels. That's the committee that's been reviewing the two different programs. We're looking at WIT and Wisdom and EL Instruction. Last Monday, a week ago, seems like longer, but it was a week ago, they came to the Curriculum Committee meeting and had a conversation with Adrienne and Andrea. And so I thought that went well. I don't know if you wanted to comment on that and talk about what that was. I'll provide a little overview as to sort of what we talked about. Well, just, you know, just to introduce, we, trying to find, basically, the questions revolved, you know, the framing questions revolved around what the teachers were seeing in the programs we were looking at, what they noticed, the positives, the areas that maybe they didn't, they didn't see. And I think, you know, one of the main factors was what experiences they were having as they tried the different lessons within their classrooms and how they felt their voice, was their voice being heard in terms of the process. Dr. Ackerman, Adrian, I don't know if you wanted to add anything about your perspectives of that?
I just wanted to say that it was a rich conversation and that, I didn't, oh, it was a rich conversation. Then I would like to turn it over to Adrian because he really is more into, you know, the very meat of it. I'm looking at the human aspect of it, but you know more about the detail.
Yeah, I mean, I, just to summarize, yeah, there was probably a dozen teachers online, maybe, or 15 or so. It was very informative. They gave, what I was looking for was some comfort to feel that the process was comprehensive, and I personally got some of that comfort. I mean, I still have, I'm a little bit hesitant still, but I guess we haven't necessarily picked a program yet.
Right.
Or, I don't know if that's going to be talked about tonight.
Yep, yep.
But yeah, it was nice to have teachers, like, freely talking with us and giving us their input on the positives and negatives of the programs.
Absolutely. That was the most important thing to me, was how the teachers felt, not only about the program, but about how they're being heard.
And I had shared with the Curriculum Committee beforehand, and I just shared maybe about 15 minutes ago with the entire board, the rubric that's being used to look at both programs. So I think, you know, just as a point of reference, and we can talk about it, because we'll have opportunities, again, I'll go through sort of where we are in our timeline, but there'll be opportunities for the board to look at that and maybe even ask questions of the committee next time they, you know, you see them based off of that. But I think you'll see, if you get a chance to review it, how, you'll be able to see how comprehensive it truly is. I mean, it looks, it does look at the, it looks at both programs through 11 different categories. So the committee split up into three groups, each of us taking a portion of it, and it was, it reviewed each program based on phonological awareness, instructional design, phonics instruction, fluency, vocabulary, culturally responsive and sustaining education, comprehension instruction, motivation and engagement, assessment, listening and speaking, and writing. And under there, there was about, you know, anywhere from, you know, six to 26, you know, statements that the teachers used to evaluate each aspect of the program. So I think you'll see, that'll give you a good look at what the teachers were looking at as they were looking through it. And then where we are in the process, today, we met with the, what we asked during the process as well, too, is there was a form for each group for questions for the publisher. So anytime, you know, if we had a question, something we didn't see, or just something more general about the program, we had that opportunity today to meet with representatives for both EL Education and WIT and Wisdom. We had an hour with each. They were given our questions ahead of time. And again, I thought the conversation was great. I mean, the questions ranged anywhere from specific details about aspects of the program to what they offer for professional development and what they offer for rollout once a program is chosen. And so I was pleased with a lot of their ideas in terms of, really, once the decision is made, they start, they go right into action. And they, they've even said that they've worked with districts who made the decision over the last two weeks, and they're already planning professional development for before the year has, is going to end. So that's how quick they can move if the district has that time, you know, to provide before June. So I think everybody was really pleased, and then they also gave us time after those questions were answered to revisit our rubric and to see if we changed any of our analysis based on their answers, which occurred. Some went up, some went down based on their answers, but the next step now is they're going to turn around within the next 24 hours and provide us with a report based on our analysis. That's a report that we will look at, you know, as soon as we get it with Susan, to formulate our recommendation, and that's something that we'll also provide to the board. So you'll see what, what we did, the results of the work.
Let me follow it. That was one of the things I wanted to talk to you about was the, our calendar for whatever meetings. Were, we, were Adrian and I and, well, I guess it's just me and Adrian now, aware of the meeting? Did I, because I don't have it on my calendar.
Well, the next time, the next time we meet to discuss this will be next week at the Committee of the Whole.
Right, but I'm talking about that meeting with the representatives, because I didn't know about it. I don't know if you did.
No.
No?
No, well, that was really based off the committee work and the questions that the, that the committee came up with. So that was just them answering our questions.
And they, they were planning on sending the feedback report, too, so that the board could see the questions and the answers.
We'll have to have a conversation about that because that's not what Adrian and I would like to have happen, would like to be part of. Just what I said.
Can I just say, I said this last time, too, and you guys are probably going to disagree, but I support Dr. Piazza and the 30 people, and I know you have expertise, I don't have expertise, you have expertise, but whatever decision they make, they went through an entire process and are part of the administration and they're running it. We, as a board, should accept all of the work that they have, and granted, like, we can look. So in my opinion, it's like if they have meetings, you know, to discuss this, like, we should trust that they're making the right decision.
Please don't insinuate that I don't trust the teachers, because I trust them with my, with my life. I was a teacher myself, I understand that. But I'm looking at it as a member of the board now, and if we're going to pay for something, not only should we listen to the teachers, but we should have whatever the representatives are saying, that should be part of our knowledge. But I should, that's it.
Okay. And I think the plan was for next week's COW to include members, sort of like reproducing what we did with the Curriculum Committee, having members of the District Review Committee to come or at least be here online to present, you know, basically what our recommendation is, and then you can ask questions of them as to why, you know, why they came to the conclusion they did. You'll have, by that time, you'll have the report from the Hill for Literacy as well. So I think, you know, between the report and the conversations, hopefully, that will answer a lot of questions. If there are, if there are questions beyond next week, because again, the timeline was to get it in front of the Committee of the Whole for approval on May 20th, and then in front of the board on the 28th or 29th, whenever the, the board is, for official vote. If there are questions in between there, we need to discuss how we would get those questions answered. Like I said, you can have the report as soon as, what's today, today's Monday, you know, probably by Wednesday.
They said like 24 hours or 48 hours?
Yeah, we'll get it hopefully by end of day tomorrow, but if not, they said first thing Wednesday morning. Well, that'll give us time to review and share that with the committee and discuss what our recommendation, if there is one, to be made, will be made on Monday, the 20th. Well, we can share that ahead of time with the board so you can kind of see, okay, which, what the conversation is going to be based on. And then maybe, I mean, I don't know, maybe if, if it's possible, we, whatever program we're recommending, maybe we can have a rec, a representative there?
That would be, that would be fine.
I don't know about their availability in the evening, but, you know, I don't know.
I think we should have, put this on a COW agenda because we need to talk about it.
Yes, I think for next. So I'm going to recognize Ian and then Beverly.
Ian is, I asked him to promote Ian for attendance webinar.
Okay.
Talk to a full member, so you may want to start with Beverly. They should be promoting him now.
It looks like he's there.
Beverly had her hand up.
Or Ian may be on now.
Yeah, I think Ian was-
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, I got fenced out or something. I need to be promoted back up into panelist. Also, I just wanted to make a note that I've been trying to get a look at that master spreadsheet, and it's asking me to verify email with a code, but then when I try to do that, it's saying there's been too many failed attempts. So I don't, but I haven't, it's the first time I've tried doing it, but like, there's a whole bunch of like verify your email that's like popping off.
Is that something you sent out, Phil?
Okay.
The Board of Ed, all the Board of Ed members are getting lit up.
Have access to it. So let me, let me try just forwarding the link then instead of sharing the document.
Oh.
Okay.
Maybe I'll have success with that.
But in the meantime, if I can get back up the panelist, that'd be great.
We could probably also translate it into a PDF if you wanted, that's easier for people to open.
Yeah. I can definitely do that.
Okay, so Ian is now a panelist. We're going to troubleshoot the spreadsheet, and I'm going to recognize Beverly.
Thank you, Jay. Phil, can you talk to us about some of the concerns that the committee had, that they talked to the, the two reading groups that you were talking with? Can you tell us some of the concerns the committee had about both of those groups?
Yes, just give me one sec, I was just working on that.
Phil, do you want me to share?
Yeah, go ahead, and I'll try to bring it up, but thanks, Lisa.
Sure. So, hey, Beverly. So there are a few things. So one of the concerns was ease of usability. So when the teachers were going through the resources, one of the curricular resources was much easier for them to plan their lessons and have all of the materials at hand for them to teach. The other one was much more labor intensive, much more cumbersome. You had to go through three different manuals, three different places to get the resources to teach. That was one of the concerns that the staff had mentioned. Another concern that they had mentioned was instructional minutes. How long were the recommended instructional minutes? Could the block of time for ELA be split up across the day, or did it need to be taught together in one lump of time, if you will? There were other questions about culturally relevant text, asking about what it is that the publishers are doing moving forward to make sure that they are consistently making updates so that things are constantly evolving, so that they're much more culturally relevant and responsive to the needs of children. Assessments, we had conversations about assessments, how many assessments. We, as a staff, heard, we heard our teachers loud and clear, and our teachers want to make sure that, yes, we have assessments that give us a lot of really good information. However, we want to mitigate the amount of assessments. So we want to get really good quality data, but we also don't want our teachers to spend all their time assessing. So those were a couple of the buckets.
Lisa, is that for both programs or for both programs?
For both programs. We were asking questions about assessments for both programs, asking about instructional minutes for both programs, yes.
Yeah, and another, Bev, another thing that came up under both is, is questions like, how available are the representatives from your program during the school year? Can you walk us through the support that we would be given if we chose your program? A lot of questions about pullout services, especially for students with, with needs, asking questions like when can students be pulled out of tier one instruction? What does-
And Phil, Phil, what were the responses from the representatives about these?
Well, I know, I know, in terms of, I'm sorry, Bev, in terms of the support, you know, I was pretty impressed with their level of support that they offer right from the get-go. I was starting to say earlier, generally, right from the moment you make the decision, they sit down with you and sort of map out your, not just the rollout, but also the professional development throughout the year. So they don't just, you know, they don't just give you their product and kind of walk away. So I was pretty impressed by the, the level of support that they offered, and at least that they described at today's meeting. Lisa, do you remember anything else?
I think one of the things that we were impressed was the WIT and Wisdom representative had stated that there would be a specialist available throughout the entire process, and that was something that we could email and contact them with any questions that we had throughout. I think another thing that was really interesting was how they were recommending, and this was from both the vendors, how they were recommending supporting teachers with using their resources with integrity. So they were talking about providing professional development prior to units, to do some of the unpacking, to do some of the planning. That was actually really well received as well.
And Lisa, what about the diversity of the programs and the length of time?
So, what, so they came up with a couple of different suggestions in terms of instructional minutes. When we spoke with the WIT and Wisdom representative, they were, they have a few different scenarios, one being 90 minutes and another one being 75 minutes, which would be in addition to our phonics, in addition to some small group time. So he was talking a little bit about two possibilities, if you will, in terms of instructional minutes. The same thing is true for EL. The representative was talking about one portion of the ELA curriculum being 60 minutes and then some small group time as well. I will say that where we have a lot of questions, and our teachers are asking a lot of questions for clarification, is when do our children get the opportunity to practice reading independently and practice transferring some of those skills? And the, what we are getting from both representatives is some sort of a, a small group time of 30 to 45 minutes daily, where kids would work with the teacher and also have some time to read independently texts that were structured from the teacher and really introduced by the teacher. Now, when we talked a little bit about providing support for our kids with needs, one of the recommendations was for children that are needing some extra differentiation, that there could be opportunities for our specialists to push in during that time, because we want to make sure that kids have an opportunity to work with their peers. Another thing, Beverly, that was pretty loud and clear was that we want to ensure that all of our children, regardless of identification, are available and are, are in the classroom as much as possible for the whole class instruction. We heard that pretty clearly from both of the representatives, that since it's tier one whole class, we want to make sure that all of our kids have equitable access to that. So considering other times that we may be able to have specialists push in or pull out based on student need.
Maybe at one point you can tell me what the, what the schedule will be for, for the grades implemented in these programs, like, what does it look like? How many, how, how many minutes in Language Arts and, well, 90 minutes you're saying now for Language Arts and Phonics and Reading, and how many minutes for Social Studies? I guess they'd still do Social Studies in the lower grades, and how's the, how's that elementary schedule going to be broken out? Because I'm assuming that this is longer than what they're doing now in that area.
Yes. That, we will absolutely be having huge discussions about instructional minutes because until we really commit to one of the curricular resources, we don't know the exact amount of instructional minutes that will be needed. But you're right, Beverly, it is longer. It will require more of our instructional minutes because it's much more of a structured approach to literacy instruction.
And Beverly, that's-
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the million dollar question, and that's the question that the principals are anxious to get answered. But as Lisa said, you know, until we commit to one program, then that's going to be the stepping off point for, for looking at our schedule and determining how we're going to fit, all that we need to fit into one school day.
They are aware that it's going to take more time, and so we've also talked about integrating some of the knowledge building that we have going on in Social Studies and in Science. Of course, there's still going to be hands-on science experiments, and they're still going to do creative things with Social Studies, but if we can do better with integrating that, those topics, that, that will also be an asset to us.
Thank you.
So, from what I'm hearing, then, the entire schedule for the elementary schools has to be redone, is that correct?
Well, not the entire, I mean, we have to make some adjustments, for sure, yeah. I mean, and that's what we're sort of waiting to figure out by, you know, like I said, we can't really do that until we determine which program we're choosing, but, so that work will happen right away.
But I did understand that you can chunk some of that work.
We talked about that today with the representatives, like where you can break, and they made some recommendations as to, you know, strategic breaks and where not to do that, and there's definitely some times where you don't want to do that. So, so again, depending on the program, we'll work with their reps, you know.
Will they add that to the report, that discussion, or do you know?
I don't think that'll be part of the report, but it'll definitely be part of, I think that, you know, the first step with the representative, after we choose a program, would be to share our schedule with them, and that they can help us, you know, put the pieces together.
Got it.
Is one longer than the other, or is it just?
It's just, yeah, that's, I think it's a matter of like 15 minutes, though, 20 minutes?
15, okay, so it's-
Yeah, it's about 15 to 20 minutes, yeah. The WIT and Wisdom compendium is a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about, we're talking about the opportunity for push-in from special ed teachers or reading specialists. How many reading specialists do we currently have in each elementary school?
Well, there's, we have one literacy specialist for each school, and then the reading specialists-
They're reading interventionists.
They're reading interventionists.
And there's like three to four, depending on the size and the number of kids that we have. The bigger schools, I think, have four, and the smaller have three.
So I'm, I'm just trying to kind of do the math in my head here. If we've got, we'll assume that some of those, some of those people have PPTs or have time assigned for one-on-one, how much support are we going to have for this push? I mean, like, half of our kids or so are below grade level, or maybe a little bit less than that, but how much time, are we going to have enough time for push-in support, or enough staff for push-in support or tier-two intervention in, you know, later on in the day or something like that? I'm just-
Yeah, we're going to have to work-
I'm just kind of thinking out.
Yep, no, and these are questions, all questions-
Three people and, you know, 15 classrooms of kids that are-
Yeah, all questions that have come up, so, so excellent questions. And we are going to be working with principals to sort of, you know, look at these positions, how they've been used in the past and how that's going to change by really, you know, stressing the push, stressing the, the push-in. But then, you know, I think it came up this after, or this morning, and we talked about, yeah, those tier-two, tier-three interventions happening at different parts of the day, later in the day. It's going to be strategic, I mean, you're right. I mean, there's going to be a lot of ground to cover with the personnel that we have. So those are questions, like I said, those are the important conversations we're going to have with the principals to, as they organize their schedules.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think we should look at, for the personnel that we have, and then how many do we need to actually be successful at this, of those personnel? And I know that we're not getting more money for next year.
No.
And there's other things.
And we've lost our tutors.
But, and, and we've lost tutors and all these other issues, but I would personally like to know exactly, or not exactly, but our best guess on what we need to be able to properly support the 19% of kids or, you know, that already have, you know, PPTs or IPs in place, and to help support this curriculum. So if we need more teachers to support reading, I don't know where that would come from, but at least it would be nice for the board to know that we need those teachers and that we'll have to talk about it.
Yep, so we'll be able to hopefully figure out what we're doing with what we have, and then, you're right, identifying what we might need. Yep. And so I think, as I was stating before, I think the, the next step would be to share the report with you that we get back from Hill for Literacy, along with what we have, what our conclusion has come to, what decision we're making as to what we want to propose, and that will lead the discussion hopefully next Monday, if that's, if that's okay.
Okay, I'll recognize Ian.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify with the Assistant Superintendent, when can we expect that report from the Hill?
Well, the Hill promised a quick turnaround. They said either by the end of day tomorrow or first thing Wednesday morning. So again, we'll, I would say-
So we'll have some time.
I would say Wednesday night would, would hopefully be a time that we can get it to you. Again, very latest, maybe Thursday morning.
And you would forward that out pretty much immediately?
Say that again, sorry.
Okay. So, I, I just wanted to confirm that we would receive that pretty much as soon as you do, more or less, right?
Yes.
So we have some more time with it?
Yeah, they promised us a quick turnaround, and that's what I'm promising to you.
All right, very well, thank you. And no, I guess for next Monday, are we looking at this as basically the follow-up, the debrief from the report and analysis discussion of the report?
Yeah, I would assume that we discuss elements of the report, and then any remaining questions that you might have for the representatives from the committee that will be there.
Okay, thank you. Oh, also, one more thing, I guess I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Adrian as far as like, and it sounds like you're already kind of on the case there, Phil, with, just a needs assessment, you know, even if we're looking like it's going to be deficient in teachers, we just need to know that, so we can start working on that solution moving forward.
Yep, and I don't expect the principals to be shy about telling me what they need.
We actually- We actually meet with them tomorrow morning, so that's on the agenda.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I'll recognize Jen.
So after receiving the, oh, sorry. After receiving the report, do you intend to make a decision, a recommendation for next Monday so that we can sort of assess?
Yeah, I think-
And then like your, your committee will present as to the benefits, as to why they selected?
Exactly, and I'd like to get that to you. Like, by Wednesday, we're going to have a chance to meet and discuss with the committee the report as well, make a recommendation. And that will be shared with the board ahead of time. So you, like, again, so you know. And I think that will be part of the conversation, right? Why did you choose this one over this one? Yep.
And the rubric will guide because the process has been so in-depth that you'll, you'll see through the rubric and through the analysis-
Yeah.
Part of how they came to it. And then, of course, they had probably multiple conversations about it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking forward to, I don't know what the report's going to look like, but they, I mean, I'm assuming it's, you know, based on what we did to generate the report. I would, I would assume it's going to be pretty extensive.
And then we're expecting to take a vote on the 28th?
That's our, that's our hope, yeah. If we, if, if all questions are answered on Monday, then our hope would be to put it on the agenda to be voted. So then we can officially reach out to them and let them know our choice has been made and then start the process. Again, one of the key things that we've identified was our successful rollout of some of the phonics work that we did this year was all based on what we were able to do in June last year to put some things in front of the teachers, let them at least get comfortable with it, look at some things over the summer, familiarize themselves with the, you know. So we want to follow that same model as best we can. If, if the timeline works, that would be our goal. So then we can get into grade-level meetings before the end of the year, expose them to as much as we can, you know. Either, no matter which one we choose, I think there'd be some online access available almost immediately. And then, of course, getting the materials in probably wouldn't be until the, the physical materials until the summer. And we'll figure out some way to maybe get those in teachers' hands before they come back. And then, of course, our professional development, those first few days will be all based around K-5 literacy for the elementary teachers.
Which is also what we did with the foundations. It also includes, Lisa, getting into the schools, working closely with the literacy specialists, meeting with the grade levels, doing walkthroughs with the admin to see what the look-for's are. So CAPS has that whole look-for document that I think I've shared with you all and it's broken down into all the elements of literacy so that, you know, beyond the phonics, which they've gotten used to and accustomed to, they'll be looking at the phonics, at the, sorry, comprehension, the vocab and the other parts of the rope. So I think the model that we put into place, thanks to Lisa and Phil and the team, will really work with this as well, so.
I'm going to recognize Beverly.
Thank you, Jay. Phil, do we have a cost of these programs yet? An initial cost or no?
Yeah, yeah, we have preliminary costs and they do fall within the-
They were good with our estimate.
The estimate that, that Adrian put forward when we were in the middle of our budget discussions. We'll, we'll cover the cost of either program.
Do you know what the cost is? Can you get the cost to us if you don't know it tonight?
Yeah, I, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I know we have the figures, so I could share those.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it. And thanks, Adrian, for making sure we put that in the budget.
I know. Takes a village.
Any other questions from board members or comments?
The only other thing I want to, I want to stress is that we need to put, when I looked at the agenda again, it's, we're going to be talking about Hill, but that's not what I'm talking about. What I mean is ensuring that board members, especially board members on the curriculum committee, sit in any meeting that's open. Any, I shouldn't say that's open, any meeting, period, concerning. I'm just asking you to put it on the agenda next time.
I, I would second that, that we should, we should talk about that. I mean, personally, going through like all these questions that came up in today's meeting, it would have been great to, you know, to have the opportunity to observe some of that interaction, you know, with representatives from the Hill and whoever.
The tone of the conversation is different. So we need to be able to assess that, listen to teachers and, and the representatives.
I have to say that usually I'm knee-deep in this work, you know how I am.
I do.
But I have really been very good about kind of stretching the umbilical cord and really let, letting the, the team take the lead. And while I have had a chance to pop in, my time's been so consumed with budget, I really didn't even have time for that. But I really was very, and I know you all are trusting too, of the, the talent that we have in our educators. But I was so impressed with this process. You could, you could see, I would have loved just for you to walk by and seen their work in action because they were so engaged in it. They were asking really good questions. So even during the whole process of review and then the trying it out and coming back, because it was kind of a review and a pilot all at the same time. And they were really trying both programs as they went back and they were having other people try it. So many of them have said to me, it's much richer than what we've done in the past. You know, they really felt they had a better sense because they really unpacked the curriculum and the standards in the program. And they tried it out. So I have to say that, you know, you know, I, I think that even from a bird's eye view, I'm able to say that I, I really feel good about it. And whatever they bring to me, you know, I'll be very interested in the report. But I'm kind of learning about the same time that you are too, that it's coming to me. You know, it'll have to come to me as, as our curriculum document says, but then it'll come to you in the same full.
I trust you implicitly, implicitly. You're not looking at it from the, the same viewpoint as a board member. And all I'm asking is that we put this conversation on an agenda.
Okay, so based on what Zoom is telling me, I'll recognize in this order, Beverly, then Ian, and then Jen.
I should have lowered my hand, Jay, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, no, no problem. Ian?
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely just want to voice support for Andrea and Adrian in the idea of having a broader conversation about how we interact with curriculum in the future. And also, I just wanted to confirm because I had a little connectivity issue in the beginning of the meeting. The master review tool that we have access to now, thank you for that, I was just kind of skimming through it and it looks like it's all blank. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the blank one. I just wanted you to kind of see what, what areas were being examined.
Okay, okay, so this is the tool-
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say-
Yeah, no, I just wanted to-
I believe when you, I'm sorry again. But I believe when you see the report, I'm assuming that they're going to include the, you know, the, the figures along with it. So you'll be able to see everything together.
Okay, so we will have a look at, and that, that'll be like, we'll see like 30 review tools, like, or, or the committee's kind of broken up into subcommittees clusters? Or there's like 30 teachers in each committee? Or, what's the makeup of the committees again?
It's a total of 30. And we split each other, you know, it's like groups of 10. And we each examined two or three parts of the, you know, I listed off those 11 categories. I think, you know, so we each chose, you know, four, actually, you know, around four, three or four areas that we looked at. And then we came together as a group.
Okay, okay, I get it. So we will see one, basically one math, one, one review tool that's completely done. And each subgroup is going to have a consensus on their scores?
Yeah, you'll, yeah, you'll see, you'll see it broken down into those 11 categories for both programs.
Okay, right. But we're not going to see like each individual teacher, committee member, their scores. It's going to be sort of a consensus score coming from each group.
Yeah, that's how the form was completed. It was completed as a consensus for that group, not individually by each group member.
Okay, sounds good. I just want to know what to expect to see.
Yep.
Thank you.
Jen?
It's going back-
Jen, you want to bring this up?
Oh, yeah, it's going back to control, right? We need to be able to give up that control and allow the administration to present next week. And we listened to their recommendation. I'm just going to bring this up from like one of the things that I implemented at my work. I was responsible for putting the controls in place, you know, for Sarbanes-Oxley. And we had to present to leadership, right? They didn't go in and dig in to make sure that I had every single control in place or that my staff put the control in place. They trusted that we did our job and that we were making a recommendation that would not detrimentally impact the organization. So that is where I'm coming from, just so that you can understand, is that Dr. Piazza and the team are putting that same amount of rigor into this review. Granted, it's in a short period of time, but we need to listen to their presentation and we don't need to be in the boots, ground, ground up being, you know, doing the research. It's, it's sufficient enough for me next Monday, when your team comes over to present and tell us the benefits and the disadvantages of each program. And whatever you recommend, I will support.
Matthew?
Thank you. I generally agree with Andrea and Adrian's position. And the reason is, at least my reason is, I don't see this as a matter of control. I don't see our board members on the curriculum committee jumping in to try to run or hijack the process to the committee. I do think it's important for the board, through our curriculum committee members, to have enough information about what has gone on so that we can make informed decisions. Because eventually the decision that's made becomes a decision of the board. And I, for one, don't know enough about what's going on. I tend to think more slowly than some of you others, perhaps. And, you know, getting some feedback from my fellow board members on this topic or they from me on some other topic, I think is a very positive way to make an informed decision as a group. Again, I don't, it's my impression. I know nothing about what goes on in different people's heads. But it's my impression that, that our two curriculum members don't want to run the committee. They just want to know what's going on so they can share it with us and help us formulate useful questions. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Did you have anything-
No, thank you.
Else to add? Well, this was the, Matthew, did you have another comment?
Timing may, may not be right. Before we adjourn, I would like to, to ask a couple of questions, if we may, on a different topic.
I'll send it on the agenda. Would you go to literacy?
Not to discuss, but to bring things up for possible future discussion.
Okay, yeah, you can send that through email. We don't actually have an agenda item for that. That's at the second COW of the month is where we bring up agenda items in COW. But you can certainly always share them by email.
Sure, I'll, I'll send you the, I'll send you the email, no problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we find that helps so that we can get the full, full nature of what you're proposing. Ian?
That's fine.
Thank you, yeah, I just, I'll probably follow this up with email too, but just real quick. Yeah, I would like to maybe look at how we do these COWs and how the agendas are set up. Because I think it could be useful to have an agenda for communication of reports and, you know, other business or something like that at the end.
Yeah, we do that-
Just to kind of, you know.
At the next COW, we're going to review the, the list of agenda topics and, and any that are added in the, in between will be added to that and discussed. Or others can be brought up that night.
Okay.
It's not on, not on tonight's agenda.
Yep, all right, thank you.
So unless there's anything else about literacy? Dr. Ackerman?
Motion to adjourn. Is that true?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Oh, wait a minute.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Okay, Jen, all right. So unless there's any objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Well, this is probably our shortest meeting ever.
I know.
Just to spoil the future.
Plus, we started three, plus, we started three minutes late. So there you go, it's really 45.